Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Concord City Council meeting of Monday, July 14th, 2025. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Brown, here.
Present.
Counselor Fennessy.
Present.
Counselor Foot.
Present.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Horn.
Here.
Counselor Keach.
Counselor Keach is delayed. He'll be here momentarily.
Counselor Kretovic.
Here.
Counselor Kurtz.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Excused.
Counselor McNamara.
Excused.
Counselor Schlosser.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Seku.
Present.
And Counselor Todd.
Here.
Very good. Thank you very much. I would just like to mention that devices are available to help those who have difficulty hearing. These devices use a transmitter and headphones, and they're available at the Concord TV booth, which is at the back of City Council chambers. And you can see Michael's arm waving in case you need them. I will, we have one, two, three, four sets of minutes to approve, June 5th, June 2, from June 5th, of the Finance Committee and City Council, and then City Council minutes from June 9th and June 23rd, if it's amenable to City Council. I'd like to just take them all once. I'll have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved and seconded?
Second.
All right. Any comments? Counselor Brown?
Yes, Your Honor, I have corrections for June 5th Finance Committee meeting minutes.
What page is that, Counselor?
So on June 5th, there are, on Page 3, Page 4, Page 5, Page 6, 7, and 8, there were roll call votes, but the individual member's vote was not reflected. So that's 18, 18 votes that were taken over the course of six pages. So I'd like to table to a date certain to correct that, those minutes until August 11th, so that we can, those roll call votes can reflect the individuals who voted the way they were. All of our other, all of our other minutes reflect individual votes.
You're referring Counselor Brown to the Finance Committee meeting minutes?
Correct.
I do not attend those to do it, so I will relay your request to the staff person that does them?
I expected that, yes.
Okay.
Right.
For the August agenda, that's what you said?
For the August agenda, right.
So we have a motion to table. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. The minutes for June 5th, are these all, hang on a second, just, just the two June 5th, the June 5th meeting?
Just the Finance.
Just the Finance Committee is tabled. Thank you very much. We still have for us the minutes for June 5th, for the City Council meetings, meeting minutes for June 5th, as well as City Council minutes for June 9th and June 23rd. Any further discussion on that, Counselor Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a very minor typo in the minutes for June 23rd. The minutes reflect at 7:45. It just repeats Counselor Todd twice. Counselor Todd, Counselor Todd, move to seal the minutes.
But you can't have, you can't have too much Counselor Todd. I mean, that's what Pennekook says.
Yeah, well, I don't disagree with Pennekook. In this case, I think it would be better.
All right. So, any other comments? All right. All those in favor of adopting the minutes of June 5th, June 9th, and June 23rd for City Council as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. The minutes are adopted. Our next motion, our next item is item number seven. This is City Council action relative to the City Manager's Evaluation and Employment Contract in accordance with Section 21B of the City Charter. Every year, one of the responsibilities that City Council has is outlined in the City Charter, in that section specifically, is to conduct the City Manager's evaluation, annual review, and evaluation. The City Charter limits our evaluation to the City Manager, our evaluation of the City Manager, rather, to either satisfactory or unsatisfactory. The Chair recognizes Counselor Kretovic for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. By consensus of the Council, I move to formally recognize a satisfactory performance rating of our City Manager for the fiscal year 2025 evaluation cycle. This motion reflects the Council's acknowledgement of the City Manager's effective leadership and consistent performance throughout the year.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Schultz.
Thank you. I just want a clarification. Is that separate from the, the pay rate issue?
Correct. This is strictly, strictly the evaluation.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I would like to state I have submitted evaluations to my colleagues. I believe that the evaluation process could be improved, and I feel that this is such an important position and in respect for our employee, for the residents that we represent, and for the colleagues around the table. I would like the Managers' Review Committee to relook at, to examine the evaluation process, so that there is something that we can show to the public how the City Manager is evaluated, because there isn't anything for them to see.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counselor Schultz?
I would just like to say I do agree with that in the sense that I think it would be helpful across the board to have a sort of, I mean, they say 360 review. I assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there isn't a process where of reciprocity between the City Manager and the leaders of each of the divisions of city government. I assume that isn't in consideration. It would be helpful to have something like that. I understand other cities have something like that. I can't see any harm in considering that for next.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the information that Counselor Brown sent to us and also the comments that you're saying here. We'd be coming around to a process that we had more than 10 years ago, which is a 360 review from the community. However, I think there's always room for improvement, and the committee would gladly take that up as a referral.
Thank you, Counselor. Ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. The motion passes unanimously. The next item of business is our approval in accordance with Section 21B of the City Charter of the City Manager's contract for fiscal year 2026. The Chair recognizes Counselor Kretovic for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to modify the City Manager's contract to include a 3% salary increase for fiscal year 2026, equating to approximately $6,500 annually above his current compensation, as well as an update to the City Manager's vacation accrual policy, which will allow for a 90-day carryover that is in alignment with all other contractual and non-contractual employees.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to say my comments are in no way of reflection on our City Manager, who I do believe does a wonderful job, and it's more about the perception of wages and the issue of wages in the community. And I will be voting against it for that reason. Just a couple quick points about, to give some context to why I feel confident in voting against it is, first of all, we do need to have in the community as a whole, a robust conversation about wages, raising the minimum wage, looking at subminimum wage, all those issues. And I don't think there are that many positions in the city that pay above, you know, like the average wages for Concord. There aren't that many. You know, if you look at the pay scale for any of the jobs with the city, honestly, it's pretty modest. I mean, people aren't, you know, the majority of folks are not making such a big wage that, you know, it's just a different part of the conversation. And I felt good about those decisions that we made in that regard. I do think that, given that we're the wealthiest state to default to the federal minimum wage of $7.25 an hour, when the, with the states around us pay at the lowest rate, $13, $35 an hour at this point, and they will keep going up every January 1st in the future, I just feel that, given what a cost of living adjustment would actually mean to the average citizen in Concord, I feel like this amount is more than what would be considered a cost of living adjustment. And I don't feel that this is something that I'm comfortable in representing Ward 9 with, given the amount of money that it is, it is to be considered as a cost of living adjustment. And that is why I will be voting against it. But in no way reflects what I think any of us feel about the City Manager's excellent performance.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. The adjustment that we're proposing here for our City Manager, I think that we need to take into consideration, he's been the City Manager for 20 years, and that he's also worked for the City of Concord for 27 years. And a 27-year veteran does deserve a better compensation than someone that is just starting out at a job. But with that in mind, I want to make sure that we're also recognizing that the City Manager has long prioritized all the other employees in the city, above and beyond himself. Putting our employees first and the broader workforce for this city, this corporation, and the 500 employees that we have here are earning somewhere near 4%, and that is their cost of living adjustment. Asking our City Manager to take a 3% comes with the reflection of a responsible and thoughtful approach. It does also recognize both his leadership at the top and during a current economic realities, which are, we have a changing environment on the state level that is being trickled down here, as well as on the federal level that is also coming down to the state level and local level. The cost of living in New Hampshire continues to rise, and it outpaces wage growth across the board. This table has nothing to do with the wage set by the state. That is done by the state legislature, the governor, and that's where the conversation belongs. And trust me, when it comes, I'll be right there to support 100% a higher minimum wage in the state of New Hampshire. The motion really underscores our appreciation for the City Manager and the ongoing commitment to his leadership, and it ensures that his compensation remains fair, but also equitable within the broader context of our municipal work, workforce.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? All right. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented?
Roll call?
Roll call?
Yes, please.
All right. Madam City Clerk, roll call has been requested.
Counselor Schultz? We start with you?
No.
No? Okay. Counselor Seku?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Foot?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Horn?
No.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
And Counselor Kurtz?
Yes.
And?
Counselor Schlosser. I forgot you. I'm so sorry.
I saved the best for last.
Yes.
She's trying to make Counselor Schultz feel good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get confused, starting at the end of the alphabet.
11 to 3?
11 to 3.
11 to 3?
Well, it's still 10 to 3.
It's 10 to 3, yeah. Motion passes 10 to 3. All right, thank you. Let me just say that it has been yet a, it has been a pleasure to serve yet another year as mayor with Thomas Spell. He is thoughtful. He is opinionated. He has expertise, and he knows how to squeeze every penny out of everything that we do. Those are all skills that I think serve the city well, and certainly have served me well as mayor, and I think us as a council. So thank you very much for the past year of service.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. I mean all, thank you.
All right. That brings us to the, let me see, to the consent calendar. We have had three items removed from the consent calendar, and now let's see if I can remember what numbers they are. Number 20, second, I did mark them here.
29.
Thank you. 29.
31.
31 and 34. Thank you. All right. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, Counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I need to recuse for item number 25, since it is a company that is the contributor.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The eyes have it. The consent calendar is adopted. That brings us to our public hearing. Segment of our meeting, Madam City Clerk, item 39A.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 35, Classification and Compensation Plan, Article 35.2 Compensation Plan Schedule D.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Your Honor, members of the council, this is a report from the Director of Human Resources, John Johnson. It's very short, so I'll try to cover it. You have really two changes that need your approval. One is for the parking enforcement officer and equipment technician, two positions for Labor Grade 13, and this is something already approved in the budget. So this is just the process you go through to actually change Schedule D. And the second item to change is changing the title only from the Director of Real Estate Assessments to the Director of Assessing. Again, that's something we talked about during the budget process, and this is just a housekeeping change that you need to make for this.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing on item 39A. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on item 39A? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, that brings us to item 39B.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $30,406.50 as a transfer out to the Highway Reserve for future improvements to Sewell's Falls Road and accepting the sum of $30,406.50 as a contribution from Country Estates of Concord.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Your Honor, members of the council, staff recommends that the city accept the sum of $30,406.50 from the developer for future improvements to Sewell's Falls Road in lieu of the full width patch as, at this time. In the short term, the developer will restore all the utility pavement patches in Sewell's Falls Road, as well as Abbott Road, to city standards, thus significantly improving the current condition of the road. In addition to these dollars, financial, for the financial contribution, developers obligated to pay street damage fees in the amount of $13,210 in accordance with city regulations, which could be used to support the future improvement of Sewell's Falls Road. General Services Department supports the amount of the proposed financial contribution as being reasonable, given the pre-existing condition of the road and the potential future improvement of the project currently under consideration. Glad you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Brown?
Yes, can you explain how the $30,406 was computed? What is that based on?
I'd ask you. Mr. Walsh to come forward?
It was a combination of going back and forth with our estimates of what we thought that the, would take to pave the road and negotiations with the developer.
Follow-up?
Was that taking into consideration inflation, or are you thinking paving it in a couple of years?
Today's money.
Today's money. Okay, thank you.
Any other, Counselor Kretovic?
Your Honor, and that also included the $13,219 in damage fees?
That's correct.
That is above the $30,000 amount, correct?
That's correct. So the total developers providing is really $43,000, but this contribution, part of it, it's bifurcated. $13,000 is part of the permitting process for utility connections, which is collected separately. The road contribution is done this way. So, but combined, there's $43,000 that could be used towards Sewell's Falls in the future.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh, while you're there, could you just turn that microphone to, apologies. Sure. I hope that people could hear you, but I assumed they could. Any other questions for Mr. Walsh or for the City Manager? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
There be no further questions. I'll open this item up to a public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to testify on item 39B? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, that brings us to item 39C.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $10,000 for the construction of new playground in White Park and accepting a donation in sum of $10,000 for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Your Honor, members of the council, in March of this year, the final quote for the new inclusive playground turned out $60,000 over the approved funds, so starting in spring and early April of this year, the department, this is Park and Recreation Department, working with the Friends of White Park, the mayor, Counselor McNamara, and myself, created an enhanced fundraising campaign to raise additional $60,000. This $10,000 is for the new playground at White Park, so it'll be added to that.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Horn?
I might be confused. We had previously accepted donations, and they were listing out each donor. Is there a reason this one doesn't have the?
This one wanted to be anonymous?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Don't rush to playing credit. We deeply appreciate that very generous, that very generous donation. Seeing no further questions for the City Manager, I'll open this to a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to testify on item 39C? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. That brings us to public hearing action. Madam City Clerk, item 40.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 35, Classification and Compensation Plan.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Motion moved and seconded to approve the item. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The eyes have it. The motion is adopted. Madam City Clerk, item number 41.
Resolution appropriating the sum of $30,406.50 as a transfer out to the Highway Reserve for future improvements to Sewell's Falls Road and accepting the sum of $30,406.50 as a contribution from Country Estates of Concord LLC. Move, approval, seconded.
Right. Motion moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the council, I hope that you will support this action. The best I could describe of this neighborhood and the houses around this development is that they are traumatized. They are traumatized not only by the impact of the loss of trees that were taken out too soon, the pile of dirt that is now growing trees in it, the condition of the roadway that we've all had to suffer through, through the winter, and then through frost season, he, season, and now there is some repair out there. We believe that we're over the hill, we're seeing work now setting up the utilities for the development to actually happen, and we're ready to see things move on and some positivity happen in this area. This is literally four years. We've been living with a wooden storm every time. Dirt flies. It's horrible, and we're ready for something better. So I ask for your support. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Horn?
This question will be for this project or any other time we get money from a developer. Is it absolutely earmarked for that specific project, and can only be spent on that when we vote this way?
Well, our plan is to do the, all the work, so it'll go, it goes into the, to the reserve, and then it gets removed from the reserve to get done, but the work would get done.
No, I understand. I'm just, in general, is it, is, are these items very specific in a budgeted category for Sewell's Falls or for a different?
No. The, I'd have.
It goes into the reserve.
Yeah. Explain how, explain how the mechanics work, Brian.
Welcome, Mr. LeBrun.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So it's, there's one reserve account, so it's not like broken up into buckets. And out of that reserve account, when you look at CIP 78 on an annual basis, there's a list of streets that are proposed that are going to be paved during that section. So this is dollars going into that reserve account. As you can imagine, dollars go in, dollars come out on an annual basis, but that's what really maintains the paving program each year. So when these dollars go in, when that road needs to be paved, and there's going to be that funding available for it, it's not like we took, we didn't take $30,000, put it over here, and we don't touch that $30,000. It's in the reserve, and it just kind of flows its way through.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, there's a follow-up for Mr. LeBrun. So the Highway Paving Reserve, is this the same, this is the same reserve that we have put money in consistently from the unassigned fund balance? Is that correct?
Yes, on an annual basis, when we bring the surplus report to the City Council, you know, we've got, we've gone from half a million to a million, million and a half, whatever the dollars are, and then any of the portions of money that come in, and it all goes into that one paving reserve, neighborhood paving reserve program, highway reserve.
So when the work needs to be done and that money is pulled out, does, will you or will somebody come back before the council and say, we're here, we would like to pull $30,000 out to do this paving project?
Well, it's not really $30,000 just for, you know, for that road. That road's probably going to be, you know, half a million bucks, whatever the number is. So it's part of that, because it's going to be when the whole road is done, that's going to be part of it. So this is a proportional piece of it that was determined, you know, made sense for it, so.
Follow-up?
My question was just, when we pull money out of the reserve, is that, do we, do you come, or does somebody, one of the staff members come before the council to request removal of those funds from the reserve?
Yeah, that happens. So when you think of the budget that you just appropriated, so in the CIP 78, the funding source was paving reserve, you appropriated those dollars at that time. So if there's more money that is, you know, interested in coming out of that reserve at any point, the, we have to come back to the City Council for supplemental appropriation. We can't just go and take some money and then go out and do something. We have to have permission by the City Council. We have to have permission by the City Council.
One last follow-up.
Sure.
So anything that is coming out of a reserve fund would be identified in the budget as, like, equipment reserve? It would be identified as such? Thank you.
Yeah, it's one of the funding sources.
Mr. Lebrun, just a clarification. I believe that the money that goes into the Highway Reserve comes from the surplus, not from the, from the undesignated fund balance. Is that correct?
Well, it comes from a variety of different things. So the surplus that we have at the end of the year, we had that circle of life for fund balance and surpluses, and we could talk about that days and days. So it all kind of flows in, and the surplus goes in undesign, and then it goes back out and gets transferred over as the council approves.
It's like tidal waters. Pardon? Like tidal waters?
Is, except it doesn't happen every six and a half hours.
Thank you. Counselor Brown.
Yes, thank you. Just because you mentioned the flow, and I know that this is captured in the annual comprehensive financial report, it will show the fund balances, and then it also shows the unassigned as well. So when it shows that in the ACFR, like, we just dedicated $400,000 for the Recreation Reserve in January, oops, I'm sorry, and the 2024 ACFR shows that 400, but it also shows a balance. Is that balance including the 400?
When you say the balance, meaning in the reserve account?
Of the Recreation Reserve.
Right, so if you can envision, the reserve accounts are actually, they're called capital reserves, and they're on our MS 9 report, and each one of those reserve accounts have dollars that go in and out, so you see that balance when you get the report. But then throughout the course of the year, whether it's something that was appropriated by the City Council during the budget process or otherwise, then those dollars would flow out from that balance and reduce the balance. And then if there are other opportunities that, you know, dollars can go into those reserves, then those dollars would flow back in. The surplus report at the end of the year is one of those opportunities. And so the City Council takes, actually takes action to appropriate the dollars to transfer into the reserve accounts. That $400,000 is what was transferred in during that time. Then during the budget process, there's dollars that are actually allocated to come out of it, so it comes out during the year. So it's kind of a, it's an always evolving balance that goes through it, and if you put more in than you take out, obviously you build the balance.
Follow-up.
So, thank you, Your Honor. So I'm just, so the, I think the Recreation Reserve had said 600,000, and it also showed the 400,000, so that is not yet in there, so that would be added to that.
Well, the 400,000 was appropriated by the City Council in January, so that was put in. You probably didn't see the balance of it in the 2024 ACFR report, because that was completed on June 30, 2024, so what you'll see is in the 2025 ACFR when that comes out. But there'll also be an MS report that will come out probably in September or so that you'll see, and you'll see what the balance is as of June 30.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lebrun.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, are we ready for the question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The motion is adopted by the required two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, Item 42.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $10,000 for the construction of a new playground at White Park and accepting a donation in the sum of $10,000 for this purpose.
Motion moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Horn.
You already said it, but I just really want to thank the person or organization that felt driven to give this money to the Accessible Playground, because it's a really fantastic project.
I was going to say it again, but...
I'm sorry. That was very nice, sorry. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
All right, are we back in order? Okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it by the necessary two-thirds majority. This brings us to reports. Item 43, Mr. City Manager.
So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Gill to come forward, and the Park Rec Advisory Committee did meet, and they're looking for some direction. Mr. Gill has some questions, so to speak, representing the committee.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. The Recreation Park Advisory, their last meeting, I did mention one of the goals of this approved budget was to look at the pool operation, to see how other communities are handling their pools. We've identified, I've identified nine other communities in New Hampshire to give research from, and that's number of pools, number of residents, do they charge a fee, what are the age group, what are the rules, just to make sure that we are, you know, doing the best possible job for Concord. The Recreation Park Advisory Board had specific questions related to what are the desired outcomes from this body, and just anything specific they should be looking for as they have this conversation, and that was my, they were asked for me to ask you.
I think, I think the City Council, I will start. I think the City Council was asking R-PAC to look largely, to take a long view, a large view, broad view, of the pools that we have, of what the needs of the city are, and, you know, to take a comprehensive look at both the number of pools that we have, whether that is the number of pools that we really need, that we need as a city of 44,500 people and growing, whether pools are good for every location, or whether, you know, it's like the highly successful Splash Pad at White Park, should be considered for other locations, either with the pools or in lieu of a pool. And also, you know, are the pools that we currently have at the appropriate sites based on population? I mean, I think all of those are things that I can think of off the top of my head that this council would appreciate guidance on. And I see Counselor Brown, and then Counselor Horn, then Counselor Todd.
Yes, I actually think we should go even broader, Your Honor. I think pools are important, but I think we really need to look at all of our recreational offerings. Pickleball is huge. It gets a lot of seniors out and active in community. We have a softball league that's, I think, going before R-PAC, so I think what we need to do is look at all of our recreational offerings, because we also have Memorial Field coming up. So we should not stop at just the pools. We should look at everything we offer, and what people use, what people want, what they can access. I would ask that we expand even further.
Counselor Horn.
Weird for me to be on the committee asking the question and answering it, but I think more of the worst, one of the questions that perhaps staff can help with is looking at other communities similar to ours in the lifeguard pay, and does their, is their pay commensurate in the staffing issues that they have as well? So are they paying a little bit more, and they don't struggle as much with staff than, as we do, which I think the staff would then have to present that to Parks and Rec Department? I think you already mentioned, like, quantity of pools per capita as well, because I think comparing that is an important number. I think that's two of the major things that I find important.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Gill, thank you, and my thanks to R-PAC for the question. I think that some of the other considerations that I was thinking of, as we were discussing garrison pool in particular, of course, so I think that, at least what I would find helpful would be, what are the, what are the proposed recommendations for that pool? So for example, if in fact we feel, based on, you know, the other criteria that you had just mentioned, that you've been looking at, which I think is excellent, in terms of number of residents and number of, you know, uses of a pool, and then, you know, you multiply that out, and you come up with a calculation, and where are we at? If we were able to eliminate garrison pool in the future, what would happen to that pool? What are the possibilities for, do you just cement that over? And what would we do out there? In other words, that would be another question I would have. And then also, we started renovating our pools in 2017? Roth Park was the first, I should know that, in fact. It's something like that, right?
Every 12 to 15 years, I think.
Yeah, so I guess the other thing is that, I'm assuming that the life expectancy of a pool, given those renovations, we're talking at least another, maybe, who knows, 15 or 20 years of life out of the pool. So I'm not really, I wouldn't personally think it would be a great investment to reconfigure our pools or even necessarily shut any of our pools right now. But I suppose having a sense of what are the costs of the operation of the pools, and that would include the cost of lifeguards. I'm guessing that lifeguards is a component of the cost, but there are lots of other costs. There's chemicals, there's upkeep, there's maintenance, there's closing it, there's opening it, there's the water, there's, all those things go into the cost as well, which may be more significant than the lifeguard costs, but I think that kind of information could be helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Kurtz, and then Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you. As you're compiling usage data, I also think we've heard around the table before questions about opportunities to diversify the offerings within the pools, right? Like, the Splash Pad serves a different cohort than one of the deeper pools, and I know there's been mention of lap swim or water aerobics. So just sort of any data collection around that, and then relative to location, like, where, if we were going to shift the focus, how would that affect staffing levels, and then the cost commensurate with that? Where would the geography of that be useful? You know, just all of the things, Director Gill. I think we would like to know all of the things. Since R-PAC asked, I would want to know all of the things.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would add to all of the things. Whether or not any other communities have looked at any projections in terms of whether or not we think there's a trend toward staffing, interest in lifeguard staffing within our youth, and also whether or not it just makes sense to be looking at more Splash Pads moving forward.
Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it would be also helpful to piggyback on what Counselor Kurtz said, to look at the age component in the other direction, too, to see if it would be more affordable to have adult-only hours. I had made the point before, and it's still true, that of the available places to get a membership that are in, like, the hotels and at the Y, I previously was wrong when I said there weren't any water aerobics. I now know that there are water aerobics at the YMCA. You were nice if you knew that, and you didn't correct me. But there are significantly fewer places that offer a membership like that. There used to be a number of the hotels, and only one now offers a membership. So I think that would be a thing to look at, too, because we might be able to save on maybe not even need a lifeguard if we had any of the adult-only hours, as some private places don't have lifeguards in the same way. So that would be another way to look at it.
Mr. City Manager.
I'd just say, without adding to the burden, and I think this will be done under the master plan work, is are the pools aligned with where the population centers are going to be for the next 20, 25 years? And, you know, you could work with community development figuring that out. But just so the council knows, before you started this latest round, or coming to the end of pool renovations, City Council had a discussion about an aquatics facility, an indoor aquatics facility at Memorial Field. And the question was, would it be better to have a one large facility like that for the entire community that was indoor, that was year-round, and you'd never have questions about lifeguards again, because you'd have full-time lifeguards, you'd have a whole set of staffing that is associated with that? And the City Council made the decision at that point and said, "Well, we're really a city of neighborhoods. We want to have the pools in neighborhoods close by so people can easily get there, instead of having one central location, even though you could have swim meets for the high school, both high schools and whatnot." So you did have that type of comprehensive discussion before you started the next round, and you probably, you know, before you start the next round, even if you decide to go for five or six or eight or whatever it's going to be, you probably need to have a discussion again, because once you start down that road, it's hard to stop and not do a pool. So anyways, just a little history.
Counselor Credit Vic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think from my perspective, Garrison Pool is the driving conversation here during COVID, when it was closed, when we had lifeguard shortages. It's been closed for various reasons. It's been closed. It is the smallest pool, the oldest pool. It has a funky configuration, it's in the shade, and I'm not sure that it will ever rise to the occasion to meet the demands of other pools that have had better expansion. Then there's the appropriateness of the placement. Certainly, it made sense when Garrison School was open that we had a pool that was near the school, and now Beaver Meadow is some distance away from Garrison Pool. We've also had a lot of neighborhoods that have popped up. I do think that the analysis does have to look at what you have yourself come here before the council and said, how many people actually have pools on their own property now? And I think that that's a real consideration. There is the long-term cost of maintaining all of these pools in the city to all of the taxpayers, and I think that if we see the need to close a pool, that we should be closing a pool. But if there isn't an opportunity for something to take its place, then what we're really doing is shutting out a recreation opportunity from an existing neighborhood, and perhaps there's something else. So that broader look, I think, is also more important, but also understanding the realities of what it takes to actually maintain all the pools that we have, given the size of our city. And as I think you've told us before, we are the only community east of the Mississippi that has these six pools and a water park, or you can call it 5.1 pools and a water park. And I think for myself and the neighborhoods around Beaver Meadow, that's probably what we're looking for.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, I would just like to point out, I think in the budget, it stated that there were, when the six pools were staffed and the Splash Pad, there were 40,000 visits in a total of 59 days. So I think that is pretty incredible, when you consider we are a population of under 45,000, and there were 40,000 visits. So before we consider shutting down a pool, I think we need to look at everything that we are offering and the cost of all the recreational offerings that we have.
Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to give a little history perspective. I grew up in Concord, of course. My father struggled with this question when I was seven years old, and he thought it was insane that we had this many pools. However...
You might want to give context of who your father was.
I'm sorry, he was the Director of Recreation Parks for 30 years. However, Concord has always been a neighborhood of, I should say, a village of neighborhoods, right? And it's been very important to Concord that we all have our own park, our own village, and that's fine, but it comes with a cost. So I think as a community, we have to decide whether that's worth the cost or not, and I'm not here to say whether it's worth it or not, but it's expensive. Manchester, 165,000 people, they have three pools. Concord has seven. So it doesn't make any sense, but maybe that makes us a little special. But anyway, it's going to be at a cost, so we have to struggle with that.
Do you feel that you have enough to take back to R-PAC?
Everything. Very good question, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Gill.
Appreciate it. Mr. Gill. Now time to turn to Item 46, which is a request for reconsideration, and the Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to reconsider the vote taken on June 9 to appoint Mary Rose Deek as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
I'll second that. All right, that is, this is a vote for reconsideration, right? Any discussion? All those in favor of the vote to reconsider that previous vote, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The motion passes. Do I have a further motion? Counselor Brown.
Yes, I make a motion that we deny the appointment.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Credit Vic.
Would it be rescind the appointment?
No.
No?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right? All those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The motion carries. This brings us to suspense items. Madam City Clerk, suspense item number one.
It is a report from the City Planner requesting the City Manager be authorized to amend our agricultural lease for Sun Fox Farm LLC to allow limited public and vendor parking during their annual sunflower festival, as recommended by the Conservation Commission.
Mr. City Manager.
Your Members of the Council, this festival is proposed... In reference to the council, this festival is proposed to start less than a month from now. This is why you're having this on as suspense item, and I recommend approval.
Any questions for the city manager? All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify. Do we have a motion? Yes. No, we don't have a motion. Do we have a motion? Counselor Brown?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept this report and we allow the...
City manager.
We allow the city manager to amend the agricultural lease. Thank you.
Excellent. Moved and seconded. Counselor Fantasy? Yes.
Have we taken a vote to suspend the rules to take this up?
That is an excellent point. Thank you very much. We have not taken a vote. Let's, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, Counselor Fantasy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it. Now we will consider Counselor Brown's motion.
Yes.
And that was seconded, I believe, by Counselor Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Brown?
Yes, I would just like to say that within their first year of having the sunflower festival, there were at least 12,000 folks that came to Concord, and it's just been incredible. If you look at anything, marketing materials from the city to the chamber, everyone has embraced sunflowers. It is happy, it attracts everyone, it's inclusive. I was on the conservation commission when we approved it. I was also on the Gully Hill ad hoc committee when we talked about what to do with this. And we could not have a better partner than Sun Fox Farms over in that location. I'm thrilled with what you're doing. I love what you brought to the city. I love the agricultural focus. It's everything that we hope for, and I'm thrilled to see. I'm hoping, I'm on the wait list for the dinner, so I'm looking forward to enjoying this next festival. Thank you.
Any other, Counsel Fantasy?
It's actually more of a question, because we don't have the lease in front of us. Is it anticipated that the change to the lease would have parameters around just doing this parking one time, whether it be just parking during the event? What do we anticipate it looking like?
I defer to the city manager.
In terms of the conservation commission's recommendation that you just voted on, we would just do an amendment that is pretty much in line with that recommendation. So I'm anticipating we're not going to amend the whole lease, but it'll be an attachment, a first amendment identifying what's allowed for this year.
Follow-up? Follow-up. And so it would just be a one-time-only amendment? Is that...
The idea is to do a review of it, working with the client, and then if there's any adjustments need to be made, make those adjustments and then move forward. But ideally, this is an annual event. But we wanted to make sure, because it's the first time out, that everything works well, and the client has been more than amenable to work with us.
That's really my question, whether we're sort of binding ourselves forever to give this up, or it's we're doing it for this one time, and then we can review, and if it works, great. If it doesn't, we have some sort of recourse.
Correct. My understanding was that this was just for this year, and then conservation commission wanted to revisit it next year.
And they still need to get all the regular permits and other things that need to do, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Horn.
I was just going to say, as the counselor on the conservation commission, we did specify to try it for just the couple of weeks of the sunflower festival one time, and then that we would want to revisit it and make sure that everything worked properly with the safety egress, with the, you know, is there oil and gas on the ground after all of that stuff?
Thank you. Counselor Kretig.
Thank you, Your Honor. From the Gully Hill Commission, I would also say that this is Class A agricultural land, and it's one of the last largest contiguous agricultural properties in the city and the last one in the country that is agricultural land in view of the state house. And so the retention of agricultural in the use is really important. So 100% supported the conservation commission's recommendation to look at this year-over-year, and if there's any impact to the soil, because it is agricultural, and it isn't something that we want to risk damage to the larger property. Again, I would echo what Counsel Brown said. This is an excellent partner. They've done wonderful things out here. We need to be cautious and careful of any contract that we would have with anyone. Thanks.
I remember when Mr. Pollak reached out to me about this proposal and a solution to this problem. I'm very pleased to see that the conservation commission has considered this solution to the parking issues over there and have dipped their toe in the water to see how it would work. It was a very persuasive case when I saw it, and apparently the conservation commission thought the same, so congratulations. Are we ready for the vote?
All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it, and the motion is adopted. This brings us to suspense item number two. Madam City Clerk.
It's listed as a referral to the parking committee. It's a communication from Counselor Keach requesting consideration for the elimination of a parking space on South Fruit Street between 66 South Fruit Street and the Memorial Field entrance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules to consider this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it. Mr. City Manager?
Recommend the referral.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it. The motion is adopted. This brings us to items pulled from the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, item number 29.
This was pulled from the consent agenda by Counselor Brown. It's a status report from the city manager on fiscal year 2025 event grant funding.
Counselor Brown, you speak to it.
Yes, so this, the event grants, 130,000 was approved, and per the report, 106 was spent. I'm curious, what happens with the 43,125 remaining?
Returns to the city council.
In...
Follow-up?
In what form will we, do we see that?
These are dollars that were appropriated as part of the unassigned fund balance, so it just, you don't spend it.
It just remains where it was. It remains in the economic development reserve fund, I believe, is the source of the funding.
I thought it was unassigned. Bryant?
I believe it was unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
So it would just basically lapse.
Just lapses and stays, stays in the account, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Sure.
Move approval of the report.
Moved, moved to approve. Seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it. That moves us to item number 31. Madam City Clerk.
This was pulled from the consent agenda by Counselor Fantasy. It's a report from the Director of Special Projects and Strategic Initiatives on the status of the Ford Street new police station project, CIP 643.
Thank you. Mr. Counsel Fantasy, would you like to speak to your, this item?
I'm a steady mister, it's okay.
Esquire.
I pulled this because I had a question regarding the size of the addition, which is listed in the report at being 34, about 34,000 square feet. My memory was that the last time we were talking about this, the proposed addition was in the range of, I think, 13,000 square feet. So number one, I was interested in why it's tripling in size, and two, what the, there's some conceptual pricing within the report based on, as I understand it, the 34,000 square foot, and I'm wondering what that impact is.
Who's driving that?
Yeah.
Let me bring up the author of the report.
She shall autograph the report if you ask her.
Good evening. So addressed the size of the addition. So when we did the original study with Lavalley Brunzinger over a year ago, it was very conceptual, just to make sure that we could actually fit a facility that would serve our police department on that two-acre lot and using the existing building. So they did interviews with the chief and the deputy chiefs, just to get a general idea of where the department was heading and what was available at that time. They did not have a public safety expert on their team as part of that study, which is something that was added with our new team. So we went into a much deeper dive with the new consultants onboard, and it led to the size of the addition, because what needed to be in that building, excuse me, the international building code, category four category, and it defines certain public service facilities that have to have more robust structural, mechanical, electrical for any natural disaster. So the exercise that we did not go through with Lavalley Brunzinger, we did go through to define which divisions within the police department had to be in the new addition because the existing facility could not meet the IBC category four. So that's what led to a much larger addition, was understanding those facilities that could not be in the existing building. So it was that exercise of having more information and having an expert onboard to help guide. The overall square footage, if you just looked at the gross square footage of how much it took on the parcel, is not too much larger when they proposed, Lavalley Brunzinger proposed two options that came before you, before we acquired the property. One of them was to build a new building, demo the existing, and start anew. If you looked at the floor plan, it's the same size as we're actually building now. They just contemplated a smaller space, I think it was about 50,000 square feet, to accommodate all the adjacencies for a modern police station. But because we chose to go with the existing building, we didn't have all the information.
Requires larger addition.
That was a long-winded thing.
Sure.
Have follow-up?
Thank you. So if I can sort of boil down what I'm hearing, so there are certain divisions within our police department that, based on these international building code requirements, need to be in the addition because of some requirements?
Yes.
Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Where are those divisions right now? I assume they're in our police station right next door.
Correct.
Okay. Are they subject to the same building code requirements right now?
Nope, because it's an existing facility. Because we're moving into a facility, it triggers the new international building code requirements.
Okay. But are we moving into an existing building?
We are, but it's, that's an existing public safety building that met the 1974 standards. Because we're moving the entire department over to a new facility, regardless of whether it's existing or not, we have to meet those building requirements.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I did have one more.
All right.
And I apologize if it was in there, but have we been able to determine what the costs are associated with whatever those additional upgrades that are required to move the units that are currently in that building over to the new site?
We have not broken it down, but you mean what has to go in the addition versus what's over there?
For example, sorry. So what I'm hearing is, because we're moving certain units over, there are additional costs associated with that, whereas if those units stayed there, those were costs that we would not incur. Is that fair?
No, because they're not operating functionally right now. I mean, they need to, they need to be in a new facility right now. They're not meeting their current requirements next door, so they have to be relocated out of that building in order to meet the needs of a modern police department. So they would have to move regardless. If we're building a new building, completely brand-new building, it would probably be more expensive, because you'd have to build the entire facility to meet those IBC category four requirements. But because we can put certain departments within that existing facility that doesn't have to meet those higher standards, we're saving money, quote-unquote, for that portion of the building, and we're only paying the premium cost for that addition. Does that make sense?
Ms. Fessom, this may be a question that's more appropriate for the department, but is it fair to say that some of the restrictions that the department is experiencing now in the current building are those, are the issues that are preventing the department from being accredited?
I believe they are accredited. The chief may be able to answer that.
We very seldom see you in mufti.
Excuse me?
We very seldom see you in civilian.
I know, I know. So the main focus with national accreditation, really it boils down to safety when it comes to the building, especially detainee safety. One of the biggest issues that we've had ever since we moved into this facility in 1975 is the dangerousness of transporting detainees from the garage to the basement. And so that's something that, you know, an assessor would look at for sure. This project solves that whole problem. Other things that they're looking for is, you know, just your modern HVAC systems. And so we would have some problems with that. We don't actually have shower facilities for detainees. It probably costs a lot of money to plum that facility for that, so that's where we stand.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you both. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel for...
Thank you. So the differential from category three to category four, hardening the building, is what we're talking about, correct? So is it absolutely necessary to be a category four for this facility?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't want to overlook anybody. Counsel Horn.
When I first came on, I toured the police station and was pointed out how inadequate it was for modern times, and like you just said, even sort of when you started, it wasn't the best building. Because now with this new police station, we're learning that it'll be, it'll be very strict on where certain departments can be. Is that, again, going to limit us down the road because it's a smaller space that certain departments or divisions are stuck in?
Right now, it's sized for expansion, so we're looking out 50 years, essentially. There will be some spaces that are not completely fit out for them to grow into.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the report?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it. N.C. Clerk, item number 34.
It is a report from the Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations recommending changing the fiscal supervisor position within the Equipment Services Division of General Services to an administrative support specialist position.
Thank you. Counsel Brown, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you. So I was looking at this position and looking at our code of ordinances, specifically 30-2-2, which covers general services, and it outlines the seven different divisions of general services. So I was just curious if this is, this transfer is in line with our ordinances, or if it changes our ordinances in any way? You know, I'm just curious about that.
I actually have to pull up that ordinance, because I don't know. Give me a second. I'm Jen Johnston, Director of Human Resources.
Welcome. Always good to see you.
Thank you.
If anyone has any slides from their summer vacation, this is the time to show them.
Can you read it again for me?
Oh, it's 30-2-2.
Not right now.
I just, you know, wasn't sure if it's a position that, if it's in line with the, one of them is the administrative divisions, and it sounded like this position was part of the Equipment Services division, so they're transferring over. So my question is, when we do something like this, a change, is it in line with our ordinance? What do we do if we make a change that is not in line with our ordinances?
This is in line with our ordinance. Fleet is essentially Equipment Services. Those are synonymous terms. If we were to do something that didn't line up with the ordinance, we would make a request to... to you to change the ordinance so that it did align.
Okay.
So, we do have an administrative support specialist position in the administrative unit. We have two of those positions that you had approved in a previous year. This adds another one, and it doesn't add a position, it just adds that title and takes away the fiscal supervisor title.
The, this is the fiscal supervisor that is in the Equipment Services under the Fleet. This is superintendent.
Superintendent.
Yes. Okay. Does that, is that position open then, or is it removing that position?
The fiscal supervisor is currently filled with an employee. The way that we have done this, that's when we realign and change the position, we post it internally for five days, that is part of our ordinance, and that person is the intended incumbent for that. So, they will be sent the job posting to apply for that. It doesn't mean that no other internal applicants can post for it. They can, but this person has been in the job, and there's a slight shift in duties. They are most likely going to be the most qualified for this position.
Okay. Thank you. I just, you know, was looking at, it was fun, it was great. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions from Ms. Johnston? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Move to the floor.
Council Brown, move to approval.
Yes.
Moved to seconded by Council Schultz. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion as presented? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The motion is adopted. This brings us to comments. Just starting to go around the table. Council Todd, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. Got a couple of events that are coming up. One of them, just note that tomorrow, July 15th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., there's a free Nevers Band concert in Rolf Park. And then, the following day, on July 16th, starts our first summer music series at our new park on Canal Street, Riverfront Park. So, I'm very happy about that. This will be a recurring concert series every Wednesday night at 6:30 p.m. So, the first one will be July 16th. That's Lucas Gallo and the guys. And then, followed up by July 23, Crawl Space, August 6th, TBA, and August 13th, UP. So, great chance to get out. Hopefully, the weather will be nice and cooperate and hear some free music, local bands. Also, on July 19th, between 1:00 and 4:00 o'clock, the Pennycook Historical Society is hosting their annual Family Fun Day Open Barn Event. So, the historic 1790 Rolf Barn will be open to the public, and on display will be a multitude of Concord Coach vehicles. Some of those will be wheeled out onto the grass, weather permitting, and folks can get an up-close look at those historic vehicles. There's also going to be games and activities for all ages. Ice cream and hot dogs will be available from Sweet Dreams in Pennycook. And I think that does it. Thank you.
Thank you. Things are hopping in Pennycook.
They are.
Council Horn.
Speaking of things hopping in Pennycook, Councilor Todd and I will be holding a joint community meeting Tuesday, July 22nd, at 6:30 at the Pennycook Library and Activity Center. We've also invited Senator Tara Riordan and New Hampshire State Rep. Tracy Bricky. It's going to be an open-ended agenda, essentially. We just want community members to come out, ask us questions, and we hope to see you folks and a lot of other folks there.
I'm sorry, I'll be out of town and unable to attend. Council Cradie.
Thank you, Your Honor. Friends of the Beeve are having their very first event. It's called Bash at the Beeve. It will be Friday, July 25th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. You do not need to be a golfer in order to attend this event. It's actually a drive, chip, and putt contest with a number of different games and fun events for kids. Things are broken up into age divisions so that everybody has a chance to participate. They are asking if people have used golf clubs to bring them. The golf course pro shop usually cuts them down, uses them for their junior programs, and it really helps grow the game of golf at Beaver Meadow. And again, this is, all abilities are welcome, so I hope you're able to join them on the first event.
I'm sorry, I'll be out of town and unable to attend that one, too.
And this was the one. This was the one you could participate in.
Council Brown.
Yes, just based on the conversations that we've had today, and in finance conversations and budgets, I would request from the city manager some more information about our reserve accounts. I know that the Recreation Reserve had 400,000 put in in January, and that was dedicated during budget. I'd like to, but when I was looking back through our annual reports, it looks like the Recreation Reserve was created in 2016. So, I would just like more information, particularly about the Recreation Reserve, potentially all of the reserve funds. How much money has gone into the Recreation Reserve since it was created? And have any funds gone out since that time? You know, so this is a request for additional information.
I think, Ms. LeBrun, could I ask Ms. LeBrun?
Yes, please do.
Brian, is, is that the same report that, that we provide to the council with all the reserve funds?
So, on an annual basis, we provide the MS-9 report to the city council. We started that probably about five years ago. So, and that shows basically all of the balances in the accounts. It does show the contributions and the withdrawals from the account during that fiscal year. So, the report is as of June 30th of each year. We also, within, within the city budget, you know, there's also allocations for transfer in from reserve, like in the Recreation Department. That's been the main use of the Recreation Reserve accounts over the past few years. And then, typically, the contribution to the Recreation Reserve account has come through the surplus report at the end of each fiscal year, which occurred typically in that November, December, January timeframe.
If I remember correctly, that's, that goes on the council agenda, and everybody in the, everybody in the community sees that.
So, all public.
So, could you send that again, that last report, to all the members of the council?
The last surplus report?
Yeah.
Certainly.
So, we'll have that, and if you just look at the budget, you'll be up to date and everything, so everything's there.
Could you actually show the history of the Recreation Reserve from 2016? Just, you know, where that, does that show where that money has gone?
No, if you go back and you look at all the reports, you can see that.
Can I ask where, where are those reports at?
If you look at all the budgets for the last two, two thousand sixteen.
On the city website. It's, it's in the budget?
It's all in the budgets, yeah.
In appendix? Is that where it would be located?
No, it's in the, it's in the budget.
Uh, I'm just, I was looking for Recreation Reserve, where it was, where it came from. I didn't see it in the budget. That's why I was asking just...
So, Ms. LeBrun will send the report around, and everybody will have the latest information.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes.
Anything further?
Yep, I just, um...
Thank you, Ms. LeBrun.
There have been a number of tournaments that have been held at the Beeve, you know, and there is nothing on offer in our Parks and Rec Department for residents at Beaver Meadow. And considering what was the amount of money that was just dedicated, and we were just talking about pools being too expensive, I would hope that we see more offerings, not just from Friends of the Beeve, just from, from a nonprofit group, but from the actual golf course for our residents. I'd just like to see more of that, that period.
Okay. Thank you. Council Cradie?
Thank you.
Council Cradie Sexton?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I wanted to congratulate the Concord Little League Intermediate Team, who won the New Hampshire State Championship with a 10-4 win over Bedford last night, or the other night, and they are headed to Delaware to play in the East Regional Tournament, which is very exciting. The other thing I wanted to flag was that National Night Out is coming up on August 5th. It's a super fun event at Rollins Park from 5:00 to 8:00. And there will be touch-a-truck, and all sorts of youth activities, and food, and music, and it's fantastic. And, did somebody mention the Monkey Around?
No.
Goodbye?
Not yet.
Okay, um, I think Karen probably would have done that.
She would have, yes.
So, Councilor McNamara, so tomorrow night, there'll be an event at 5:00 p.m. at White Park to say goodbye to the old Monkey Around. I know many of us have memories from our kids spending a lot of time in that well-loved playground, and it'll be an opportunity to say goodbye. I think it's going to take at least eight weeks after that. The demo will start before we have our new, bigger and better, inclusive park where lots of new kids will make new memories for hopefully many years to come. So, that's tomorrow night at White Park, at the Monkey Around. Come with your family to say goodbye at 5:00 p.m.
Great. I, I'm just going to jump onto your announcements and just mention, I believe the Girls Intermediate Team also won their championship.
I was waiting for...
Intermediate, it was the, the Majors.
The Majors, okay.
Concord Little League Softball won their state final, and will be going to the Eastern Regionals down in Connecticut, and will be appearing on ESPN.
Ooh.
Right. ESPN Two, I think, right?
I don't know which one it is. One of those ESPNs.
I'm trying to one-up you. Council Keach.
I will just say that, you know, we all complain about our taxes, but I had the occasion to call both the police department and the fire department this last month, and they were very responsive, and I'm getting my money's worth, so I'm happy.
Well as well.
And I went through the front door, not the back door.
Very good. Can't top that.
Council's Luster.
So, I have an announcement. Window Dressers, as a community-powered energy savings, is a nonprofit organization that brings neighbors together to save money, reduce carbon emissions, and build community. Through local volunteer-powered builds, the organization constructs custom-fitted, reusable insulating window inserts that significantly reduce heat loss and fuel, fuel use in homes. These low-cost inserts, free for low-income households, help reduce heating bills, improve comfort, and cut carbon emissions. And Window Dressers combines climate action, energy justice, and community service into one powerful model for change. So, this October, 23rd to 28th, the Unitarian Universalist Church of Concord, along with the Concord Lions Club, will put our community, will put on a community build, and they are taking orders now. So, you can sign up for window inserts to be measured for window inserts, and you can visit www.winodressers.org or email nhliangreenteam@gmail.com to find more information. So, folks who are low-income and were interested in having inserts for their windows, or people who would like to volunteer to help build the windows, should contact that. So, I wanted to share that information.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I need five minutes because I have a lot to talk about. I'm just kidding, but, um...
I thought we might get out before nine, but you go, you go.
That's it. I just want to second what Council Keach said on the staff, our safety, like police and fire department, excellent work. When my wife delivered our beautiful, healthy baby daughter, four days into it, we had to call the ambulance, and I will tell you, they did an excellent work around 2:30 a.m. So, they were prompt, they took their time, and I think there's nothing to say, and excellent work, and we are very grateful to live in a city that offers those amenities. I want also to take this opportunity to express our gratitude. The Islamic Society of Greater Concord celebrated Eid Al-Hada at Kitch Park, and it was a beautiful and very important event, and I want to say that everything, from the paperwork to the day of the event, Park and Rec went above and behind and did an excellent work. So, our gratitude to the leadership of Park and Rec and the entire staff for making this important event a success. I was also honored to John Mayer Champlain, Councilor Kurtz, Councilor Tovik, I butchered it again, to read Frederick Douglass' famous speech, "What to the slave is your Fourth of July?" On June 28th, at the CD Plaza in front of the State House. This is not only an, an important event for me, it's personal as well. It was organized by the Concord Historical Society in partnership with the Black Heritage Trail. I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all the readers, to the people that organized this event. It was successful, it was beautiful, and it was well-attended. Thank you all.
Thank you, Council. Council Schultz.
I, I just want to briefly say, given that we also just came out of the state budget cycle, and I wear that hat of being a one-of-four-hundred state rep, and just everything that's going on in Washington, D.C., I just wanted to take a moment to just, because I feel like we gloss over, we might, many of us have conversations about these things separate from this room, and I just want to just say a heartfelt thing about, I know for sure that everyone in, on this circle, and everyone in this room genuinely cares about our community and is doing this for the right reason. And I think that regardless of where your political leanings are, I think that's our best strength in Concord, is our ability to come together as a community.
Here, here.
And the more we can say that and recognize that in each other, the better, I mean, things just keep getting better in that sense. So, for those who may be feeling hopeless because of their interest in immigrants or other concerns, I probably share those concerns. I just feel a sense of pride about Concord being a bright spot in that view of what government is and can be. So, just wanted to take that moment because we don't often enough lately.
Council Schultz, thank you for that, Ms. Thank you. Well said.
Thank you, well said, yep.
Council Foote.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. While you're out of town next Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., the school, city joint board for Memorial Field will be meeting at Heights Community Center at 5:00 p.m. And then, a couple other things. We went through and we had the cleanup day, I think it was in April Easter weekend, and since that time, we've been working with one of the business owners, the Granite Group, who had graffiti all over the side of the building that's facing 93, and finally got the president, Chris Ploss, in, in the town, in the city manager's office, and they've agreed and have started removing the graffiti from the building. So, thank you, Granite Group on Store Street, for doing that, and thank you, city manager, Aspel, for putting it over the top. Thanks. So, good stuff, just trying to make the city a better place, and I think one of the items, you know, that the city manager mentioned is, you know, the cleanup of Healy Park and Railroad Track. So, you know, let's keep building on that, and I think this is an effort to do that. So, thank you very much to everybody involved, including all of you. So, it's good stuff. So, lastly, I'd like to recognize three longtime, longtime citizens of East Concord, Lucille Patton, Sue Hoffman, and Mabel Wheeler, for their perseverance and persistence in getting the monument, the Welcome to East Concord Monument built, that had it for, you know, eight or 10 years, and it looks great, and thank you to them for, for doing that and getting that up to welcome folks to East Concord off of the interstate. So, great stuff, and also thank you to Martha Drucker, who was a part of that, and also Beth Fenstermark, who was here earlier this evening. So, great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. I want to thank...
Um...
Yes?
Yeah. Sorry, Your Honor, did you want to?
We've got something sort of in the, in the works here, so we've been apprised that Colonel John Pecker Park, located on Mountain Road and Shaker Road in East Concord, has not been up, is not being upkept, and Councilor Sexton, Gray Sexton and I, we're just collaborating, and I guess I'll throw it out. I'll be at that location Saturday morning at 8:00 o'clock for one hour, and my wife has agreed to join me. We need eight, eight other people. So, if you got an hour Saturday at 8:00, it just needs to be cleaned up and...
Coming Saturday.
This Saturday, 8:00 a.m.
Weather looks good. I think the mayor's out of town.
I think the mayor's out of town.
The mayor's always out of town. Yeah, I'm like, I'm like Major, Major in Catch 22.
I going to talk about the Disability Pride Day?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Go ahead. No, no, you go ahead.
8:00 a.m.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, thank you. Uh, I just want to mention that on July 26th, I believe at, at 10:00 or 11:00?
11:30.
Huh?
11:30.
11:30, thank you. So, you should have done, at 11:30, there will be a Disability Pride Parade, which is recognizing disability rights, Disability Pride Month, and the mayor, Protem, will be there to present them with a proclamation declaring on July 26th, Disability Pride Day in Concord. I appreciate him standing in for the mayor, who will be out of town.
Where was that, I'm sure? Did you say where it was?
It's going to be downtown in City Plaza, I believe. It's going to be downtown in City Plaza, I believe. Any other surprises? I do want to thank Council Gray Sexton for mentioning the Monkey Around Playground. And I also want to congratulate Friends of White Park for thinking about the sentimental value that that facility has for so many people. So many of us, as Council Gray Sexton said so well, who's just played there, those of us who got splinters building it, you know, it really has been an icon. But as is the case in, in many times, it's, it's, it's a facility whose time has passed. I believe it's about maybe eight years past its, its warranted life, and parts of it have had to be shut down, and, and what is going to replace it is going to be the first truly accessible playground in the city, and I think will be equally attractive and, and a point of, of equal pride. So thanks for mentioning that. I think it's, it's going to be a good celebration, somewhat bittersweet, but on the horizon is a, it's a brand-new facility. That said, the last thing I want to mention is, I do want to announce I am appointing an ad hoc committee. I'm appointing an ad hoc committee on the quasi-judicial board approval process. The members I'm appointing are Council Fenessy, Council Kurtz, Council Todd, the mayor will serve as an ex officio member, and Council Kurtz will chair. Any other business to be brought before the body?
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to recess, or to adjourn, right? Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no, all right.